All right. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, everyone, for being here for this June 28, 2021 Meeting of the Homewood City Council. I don't think we have any announcements tonight, so I will call this meeting into order, and we will start with an invocation from Dr. Bill Johnston, Dr. Johnston from Dawson Memorial, and then we will follow with a pledge. If everyone will please stand.
Thank you. Father, we're grateful for this evening, and I thank you as we come this upcoming week in looking to the celebration of liberty of our country that our country provides, and we're mindful of a few weeks ago on June 19, that liberty did not come quickly for everyone, but that we continue to work toward that, and thank you for those that work for the wheels of justice to move through city government, through the state government, and our national government, that it will continue to move toward that liberty and justice for all. So grateful for these who deliberate here tonight, and I pray you give them wisdom as they work toward that cause. And so we're just, again, as I was reminded today, we're not all called to do great things, but we're called to do little things with great love, and let us all work toward that end. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much. If everyone will please face a flag. I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Johnston. All right. Mr. Burgett, if you will please call and roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wilberton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nels?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harbin?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our regular council meeting on June 14, 2021, and let the record reflect that Mr. Gualtney just walked in and is now present. So we're talking about the meeting, the minutes from our regular council meeting of June 14, 2021. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of such minutes and for approval.
Some motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Ms. Nels. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have two, four, six, eight, 10. So that's 10 to zero. All right. Next, we have board vacancies. Let's go. So we had two HEC positions that were open that closed today. My understanding is that we did not get an applicant for either of those positions, so I would suggest that we open them back up for another month unless anyone has any objection to that. So that will put us, let's see, to the second meeting in July on the 26th. So we will have those close at 4:30 on July 26. All right. Next, we have a beautification board opening. Mr. Mayor, I think you've got that for us.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I had an applicant reach out to me, Ms. Abby Chadwell, and send her resume in and everything, and that I would certainly appreciate you guys approving her appointment to the beautification board.
Very good. I'm not even sure we have to vote on that. I think you just get to say that.
Okay. Well, good.
And we're all for it.
Okay. Excellent. Then I'll take it. And I don't know, we never really came up with a number for the beautification board, correct?
The number is 12 to 25.
Okay, that's what I, the number was a large variant, so, but this still, we're not at the 25 limit yet, so anybody else that wants to apply certainly can.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. Next, we've got a library board, Ward Two appointment. I believe we have one applicant for that. Is that correct, Ward Two reps?
Yes.
And that is the incumbent reapplying?
Yes.
Yes. Jenny.
So then there will be no need for interviews for that. I would assume that y'all would want to make a recommendation?
Yeah, we'd like to make a recommendation to approve Jenny Budd for her seat on the library board.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Motion from Mr. Alamon, second from Mr. Wilberton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's 10 to zero. Mr. Burgett, if you will let us plug no.
Yes, sir.
All right. And then lastly, another Ward Two appointment for the Parks and Rec Board, and I know we did have interviews for this. I'll just say at the outset that I am recusing myself from this because of business relationship with one of the applicants, but I'll turn it over to Ward Two.
We had a lot of great applicants. We had seven total apply initially, and we are going to recommend Paul Simmons for the seat.
So we have a motion for Paul Simmons. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Wilberton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And I, as I said, I will abstain from that. So that makes it nine, zero to one. And Mr. Burgett, if you will let Mr. Simmons know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have additions to the agenda. This isn't really an addition, but it is a slight change to the committee referral agenda. The item is 090621, request for consideration to work in the right of way and for variances to the signed ordinances at 2611, 18th Place South. That will go to public works and special issues rather than just public works. That is the only agenda, only change to the agenda, and with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So, second.
Was that Ms. Nels? Okay. Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's 10 to zero. All right. No consent agenda tonight, which brings us to the old business agenda. And the first item, 040421, public hearing set for tonight.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no problem.
I thought tabled items had to be under the consent agenda. Is that not correct?
You mean taking them off the table?
No, moving, tabling them. Okay, sorry. I thought, I thought we put those on the consent agenda to table them in committee, but we don't do that, so.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. No problem.
I want to make sure.
All right. Back to old business, 040421, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to rezone the northern portion of 260 Oxmore Road from a GERD to C5. The applicant is Chelsea Payne, who's the attorney for the owner, ADMA Inc., to permit construction of a three stor-, the storage facility. This comes from the Planning Commission with a vote of nine to zero favorable recommendation of the rezone. This item has obviously been before us before, and this is coming back around after the change in the proffer. So is Mr. Pugh here tonight? Mr. Pugh, do you have anything new to say? I don't, I don't know that we need to necessarily rehash what's, what's happened, but because I think we've already talked about everything, but just making sure.
No, sir. I don't have anything new in this case, so.
Fantastic. Thank you. Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask for if there's anyone that wants to speak for or against this item, if you want to come up and if you'll just sign in. And let me ask this. I know, I know the applicants are out there. If you want to come up first and, and say anything, I, and let the rest of the public have the benefit of what you're going to say, I don't know if you want to say anything or not. That's up to you.
I'm here at Mr. May's stead, so I'll let the public, if there are residents, if we need to pick up from there.
Fair enough.
Beverly Bryce LeBef, 617 Edgemore Drive, and 617 Edgemore Drive. And I just wanted to say, we've, like you said, this has been around a long time, and I think I and a large number of the other people in Ward Two are happy to see it coming to a better end than we had thought that it would at one time, and I'm very pleased with what the Patel's have proposed. I think it'll be a benefit to the neighborhood, it will look better, and hopefully, once this, that the first part of the project gets underway, then the next part, the retail and restaurant, will come along behind that, and we'll be having another great place that people want to come in West Homewood, and we want to see you all there when it happens. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
My name's Liz Elaby. I'm at 612 Cobb Street. I don't have any objection to the project, but I'm here just to ask in a friendly way for the Texaco sign to come down if they get the rezone and are going to, going to do the redevelopment. That's all.
And I believe that's being looked into right now about getting the Texaco sign down. I think they've been working, I think the city and, and the applicant have been working on that.
Okay.
My name is Michael Eady, 133 Gillan Drive. I am here in support of bringing down the old hotel and the redevelopment and the rezoning of the area. This is me publicly stating that. I think most of you have probably heard from me at this point. But yes, I think that the benefits are great for our community, and it'll be a positive step, another positive step in the redevelopment of West Homewood, which will benefit the greater Homewood area as well. So as a resident and as a business owner in West Homewood, I am thrilled about the idea of the hotel coming down and the redevelopment opportunities that it'll open up, not just for that area, for other areas in West Homewood that ultimately probably need redevelopment. So thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremy Love, 1626 27 Avenue South. I'm here on behalf of supporting the rezon proposal, also a Bateman Board member. We've dealt with this issue of this property for multiple years now, and from what I've heard from the Patel family, it's going on for multiple, many years, and I think that they face a lot of unnecessary issues from, from various places, from community and the city, and I think I stand with Ward Two residents and the City of Homewood and other residents that we finally want to see something take place and change at this location. I think the proposed zoning is the best use option for this location, because honestly, I think that if a, if a five-star, four-star hotel go there, it won't complement the surrounding businesses. And so that's why I'm in favor. I've seen the designs, the outlet, the drawings, and things like that, and so I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right.
I think we have some folks online, Alan.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Anybody on Zoom that would like to speak for or against this item? If you do, just hit the raise your hand button, and Brian can pat you through.
Mr. Eric Gibson?
Good evening. My name is Eric Gibson. I live at 301 Huntington Park Road. I would be in favor of this as well. The Patel's have done a great job, in my opinion, of seeking out opinions from the community and getting feedback and input on what we would like and what we would think about what they've proposed. There have been several chances for people to meet with them and ask questions and state concerns. I think they've done a great job, like I said, just seeking out what the community would want and not just doing this because it's something they want. That's been very impressive to me. It's their property, you know, within reason, they can do what they want with it, but they have not just wanted to do it because it's what they want. This is something that, like I said, they've got a lot of feedback from the community on, and I think it would be a good thing for the community development, and I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
It just says iPhone, so I assume you'll know who you are.
Yeah, that's me. My name is Charles Porters. I'm a longtime resident of Edgemore Drive. I'm with, I've known the Patel family my whole life. I've seen the blueprints, the presentation for me here is fantastic, and his brother did an excellent job. And being a resident of that area, it's a no-brainer to me that adding that development would do nothing but grow the city of Homewood, and it'd be, it'd be an excellent addition, especially moving towards that direction. I'm in full support of it, and I have many friends and family members of that area. They are in support of this one.
All right. Thank you. Any others?
Mr. Stephen Norris?
Yeah. My name's Stephen Norris, 201 Vulcan Road. We're actually business neighbors to the hotel. We bought there around three years ago, and from the time that I first saw them walk in the property, the Patel's reached out and introduced myself. They were supportive of us doing our remodel of our building. When we were doing stuff that filled our parking lot, they allowed us to use their parking lot for parking, and have been in open communication about their ideas and plans about their property the whole time, and as others have said, you know, brainstormed different possibilities, different things that would fit well, as well as I understand the need to have it be something that could be a profitable investment, profitable business. I feel like they've tried hard and succeeded in finding a good fit for both the neighborhood as well as a business purpose, and it comes at a pretty significant investment, and I'm thrilled to have a neighbor that's willing to invest that in their property. So I'm in support of the rezoning that would allow it to move forward. I think, I would like to think it would continue the growth and the progress in the direction of that area in the City of Homewood.
All right. Anybody else?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. All right. If there's no one else, then I will close the public hearing and ask Mr. Kendrick for, for a brief.
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to further amend ordinance 1602 of the City of Homewood, titled zoning ordinance and zoning map of city. Whereas the Planning Commission of the city has previously favorfully recommended to the city council that the zoning ordinance and zoning map be amended to provide for the property described in Section 1, taking it from its current zoning classification GERD, Greenspring, Erb, renewal district, zoning district, to the City of Homewood C5 central business district, zoning district. Whereas the council has found it necessary and desirable that the zoning of the above described property be considered and has set a public hearing for June 28, 2021. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council as follows, that the following described property described in Exhibit 1 and located at 260 Oxmore Road be in the same as taken out of the GERD zoning district and rezoned to the city's C5 business district, subject to the following conditions, which were voluntarily proffered by the applicant to restricted uses and require certain improvements on the property, subject to this ordinance, which are as follows. Number one, that the applicant has proffered construct a storage facility be constructed on the property so as to comply with the design and architectural features as depicted in Exhibit B identified to the, attached to the ordinance. Section two, the applicant will install and maintain a camera security system at the facility as described in paragraph one above. Section two, that from and after the enactment of this ordinance, that the use is permitted in C5 shall be allowed, subject to the conditions described in Section 1. Section two, that June 28, 2021, at 6:00 PM is the time and place. It's been fixed as the public hearing of the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, at which time all instances may appear and be heard. Section four, the clerk is given notice as required by law to provide for the public hearing to be, to be held on June 28, 2021. Section five, any part of provision of the ordinance declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdictions, all of the parts of provisions of ordinance not thereby affected shall remain in full force and effect, and that this ordinance shall become effective pursuant to its passage and approval by the city council and the mayor where it's otherwise becoming law.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Comments or questions from council, if any?
I just want to say that, as evidenced by tonight's folks that came out, Ward Two is overwhelmingly in favor of this rezoning, and it's, it's something that's been a long time coming, and I really want to represent the will of the folks at Ward Two, and most, the great majority of people who I've spoken to are in favor of the rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Alamon. I appreciate you letting us know that. Any other questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions for the Patel's, being a real estate guy. Development of a hotel is very different from development of a self-storage, which is also extremely different from development of a retail. Are you guys going to be the actual developers, I'll call it, of that? Do you have an expert that's coming in that knows self-storage? And I know at one point you had a retail expert. Who's, are you guys the true developers of this?
And y'all got to come up to the mic so that...
Yeah, I remember we met, I remember coffee shop.
Yeah.
Oh, entries. And yeah, we were obviously going to be the owners behind the property, and we've got a construction company that we're working out, so assuming that we're going to do, you know, rezoning, but yeah, we're going to be, we've done a lot of due diligence on this. You know, this isn't our first rodeo, so in terms of self-storage, but yes, we are the developers behind it, and we've got the right construction company to be able to make this happen.
What do you think, if you got the zoning, what's your timing of breaking ground?
Mike Patel, 260 Oxmore Road. So timeline, obviously, the first step would be the demo of the building, the existing structure.
Right.
We anticipate six months. I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but with the current climate of where everything is, you know, we probably need to have maybe some breathing room on a seventh month, just to make sure the whole entire building's down. There's a process to that, and of course, after that, we would probably need a month, maybe two months, to make sure everything's in order to construct the facility. The facility takes about nine months to build completely.
And you're going to start with the self-storage and then later do the retail?
Correct.
Is that the idea?
Correct.
Okay. It's a beautiful rendering. I don't know who the architect was, but it's very well.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Mr. Wilberton?
So I know you guys had mentioned financing being an issue about a month ago, potentially, depending on what conditions were made on the rezoning, and in light of knowing that the development itself is kind of a two-phase process, is all the financing secured for the entirety of both phases, or is that one part and then having to finance the second part? I guess, I guess I hadn't thought of, yeah, thought about it quite, quite like that.
You're asking if the whole entire thing is going to happen together for that financing, from the initial financing?
Correct, because you guys have indicated that financing potentially was a problem depending on, you know, what conditions were put on the zoning.
Yeah. The initial financing is going to be for the back portion of it, for the self-storage. Second part of the financing will be for the front part, and when we get an actual tenant in hand that signs and agrees and everything's in hand, that's when you can go to the bank and say, listen, I got this, ready to go. You know, you get another financing from that. But ultimately, until we get to that point, you know, we can't get financing on that, so.
Okay. I got you. Yeah, I just wanted to kind of talk through that with you guys. But I would also like to second what my co-counselor had to say regarding, you know, the Patel's doing their due diligence to reach out to the community, touch base with us, discuss and kind of modify some things, but also to hear out the neighborhood on potential tenants and the types of things that they would like to see kind of come into that retail space in the future. And obviously, I think they have, they have a desire to complement what's already in the community, and that still leaves them with a lot of opportunities and potential for, for different businesses, but I do appreciate their, their time and efforts in, in doing that as well.
All right. Yeah, Mr. Jones?
I'm on the opposite side. From the very beginning, I didn't want a storage facility, and, and I'm still not excited about it, but you've reached out to the community. It's obvious you've got overwhelming support. I still don't like it. I mean, I really wish we could develop something differently on that property. I felt that way from the very beginning, and we met two or three years ago, and I shared that, but nothing's changed, so I feel like that's, if that's the best we can do, then that's what we're going to have to move forward on. So those are just my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anybody else? All right. If there are no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning.
We got to do unanimous consent first.
For unanimous consent.
Yes.
I'll second.
So motion for Mr. Alamon, second for Mr. Wilberton. Young going to have a seat. Thank you. Mr. Burgett, if you'll do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wilberton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harbin?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that is 10 to zero. And now I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Now I would like to make a motion to approve the rezoning.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Alamon, second by Mr. Wilberton. Another roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett?
Counselor Gualtney?
Yes.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wilberton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Nels?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harbin?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right. So that is 10 to zero as well, and that will be ordinance 2807?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Next item, 160115, update on past, present, and future sidewalk projects. And we will, this is just, this is staying, most of it is staying in committee, but we had one small item come out, so we'll do a report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met June 21, and we heard a report from Mr. Smith. The committee voted five to zero to recommend budget transfer from engineering to new sidewalk construction. That was in the amount of $24,450. So five to zero out of finance.
All right. Thank you. And as I understand it, this is already in the budget, so it doesn't require a vote or a resolution from a speaker tonight. They just needed that report from finance.
That is correct.
All right. Next item, 130521, request to consider audit presentation for fiscal year 1920 audit from BMSS CPA's LLC and review of the results to City of Homewood's fiscal policy, brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter, and another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and after hearing the mid-year review report from Mr. Burgett and Ms. Salter on the audit results, voted five to zero to recommend moving $14,171 to the Raymond James account to satisfy our fiscal year policy. So five to zero coming out of finance, and then the other part is going to stay in, in our committee until we get the official audit.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Gier?
Yes. Is this a motion simply to move this money? This has nothing to do with hearing our audit presentation or?
No. It is simply to move the money. The, the rest of the item is staying in committee.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that is 10 to zero, and that is Resolution 2186. All right. Next item, 010621, request to authorize the mayor to sign a grant with Culture City Training Program, brought to us by Mayor McCloskey, and another report from finance. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted five to zero to recommend approval of this program.
All right. So we have a motion from finance. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 2187.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may just real quick?
You may.
I received, after I reached back out to Culture City to let them know that it was approved in committee and that it was coming to full counsel tonight, the people that I reached out to also let me know that they were actually going to continue to pay for at least the next two years of the continued payments.
Wonderful.
So we... It'll... This will at least last for a couple of years before we may actually have to put something like this in the budget, but just wanted to give you guys that update, so that...
Wonderful news. Thank you, Mr. President.
That is correct.
Feel free to stand up and tell us that money's coming this way anytime.
Always be.
All right. Next item is 020621, request for consideration to surplus obsolete indoor equipment no longer needed for general municipal purposes. Brought to us by Debbie Fallon, Library Director, Chief Nick Hill, Fire Department and Melody Salter. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item. That's an exhaustive list that was distributed.
All right. Thank you very much. And since this is an ordinance, Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us the first reading.
Yes, as an ordinance declares certain property to surplus, it's hereby established and declared that following described personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes and therefore declared surplus property. To wit, see Exhibit 8, list all of those, it's about six or seven pages. Whereas, in Section 2, the mayor and the city clerk being are authorized to direct to the disposal of property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kendrick. Any questions or comments from the council? If not, then I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Andrus. And a roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. So that is 10 to 0.
President Wyatt, just a quick question on this.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what is the notification for... You know, this is a little bit different list than, you know, some of the others we've had in relation to vehicles. What does the notification for that auction look like? Could you remind me?
The notification of the actual auction of the items? Mr. Kendrick, you may be able to answer that better than I can.
Depends on whether it's going to be by .gov or they do it... I'm not sure that I know how it would be auctioned, but it has to be auctioned and they'll be given notice of the public hearing, I mean of the auction.
Most of the items, as I understand it, are done at the .gov.
The .gov website.
Website.
Which essentially, the notice is given when the public... When the items are put on the public webpage for the .gov. They can be sold in a number of different ways, but there is notice given whenever that is.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's no minimum number of days, it's just notice to the public, the public auction.
Thank you very much. I just hadn't looked at that before and just wanted to know, just in case somebody asks. Thank you so much.
No problem. All right. If there are no other questions or comments, then I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Same move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Gier. All in favor? I'm sorry. Excuse me. Mr. Burgett, roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
So that is 10 to 0 and that will be ordinance 2808. All right. Next item, 030621, request to consider funding the deputy fire chief position. Brought to us by Mayor McCluskey and Robert Burgett and Fire Chief Nick Hill. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of this item.
All right. So we don't need a resolution for this, but I think we will go ahead and just take a vote for it. Any questions or comments before we do that? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So that is 10 to 0 and congratulations to our new deputy fire chief, sitting in the back. All right. Next item, 040621, request to consider retro pay for increased property taxes on past years for parking lot leased by the city... I think this is actually leased to the city by the estate of Buddy Wade. Brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. And another report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met, voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the 2018 payment is $125 and then the 2019 is $4,081. So the total is $4,206 from contractual services, so 5 to 0 out of finance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And that passes 10 to 0 and will be Resolution 2188. All right. Next item, 050621, request to consider releasing funds held in escrow for environmental testing on the former Jiffy Lube property. Brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. And yet another report from finance. Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. And I want more enthusiasm with this vote than the last one. Some like y'all are getting tired of voting. The committee did meet and voted 5 to 0 to recommend amending the budget from carryover fund balance 01-09-499301. So 5 to 0 coming out of finance.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. So a motion from finance. Anyone have any questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Much better. Any opposed?
That's better.
All right. Also 10 to 0, Resolution 2189. All right. That brings us to 070221, request for adoption of franchise ordinance for Spire. Brought to us by Wyatt Pugh of our BEZ department. And we'll start with a report from Public Works. Mr. Wolverton.
This was just a renewal essentially of a franchise... Or a... Yeah, a franchise ordinance that has to be renewed. My understanding was every 30 years roughly, very standard contract. And it was approved 5 to 0.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, if you'll give us a first reading.
Yes, sir, sir. It's granting of a franchise to Spire Alabama, Inc., its successors and signs in the City of Homewood, be ordained by the mayor and the city council as follows. That pursuant to Article 12, Section 22A of the Constitution of Alabama, in consideration of benefits to accrued to the city and its residents, the city does grant to Spire Alabama, Inc., its successor signs, the right, authority and privilege as a franchise is set forth as follows. Section 2, the company is granted, invested with the right, authority, easement, privilege and non-exclusive franchise to construct, own, maintain, operate, extend and enlarge in the city a plant and system for the manufacture, transmission, distribution and sale of natural gas for all purposes whatsoever. Section 3, the company is granted, invested with the rights and privilege of a non-exclusive franchise within the city to provide the natural gas system as described above. Section 4, the company facilities shall solely laid or constructed so as not unreasonably interfere with the proper use of the public infrastructure and requires them to essentially maintain the property, their property within the right of way pursuant to rules and regulations provided by the Alabama Public Service Commission and the ordinances of the City of Homewood and requires them to relocate them if in fact there is a change in the elevation of public streets or whites away. Section 5, that the company shall cause... When the company causes any opening alteration to be made in the public infrastructure, they will repair and restore a portion of the public infrastructure in as good a condition as reasonably practical as it was before the opening or alteration. Section 6 sets out the insurance requirements that they will provide to the City of Homewood during the franchise period. Section 7 states that the power and authority subject to supervision of the Alabama Public Service Commission is provided to them as a franchisee of the City of Homewood. Section 8, that the franchisee shall enter into an agreement to abide by this franchise before it's effective. Section 9, that the ordinance shall be published as required by law. Section 10, that any ordinance is in conflict with this ordinance shall be repealed. Section 11, that the duration of this franchise is permitted by law is for a period of 30 years. Section 11, that is a condition that the franchisee shall pay to the City of Homewood. A franchise fee is required by law of 1% gross sales revenues received by the company from the sale and delivery of gas in the city. Section 12, that the ordinance shall be published in accordance with Section 11558 of the Code of Alabama relating to the publication of ordinances. Section 13, that within 90 days, the franchisee shall submit a written acceptance of the ordinance. Section 14, that after the enactment of the ordinance, that the franchisee shall have the rights provided as set out herein. Section 5, any part of provision of the ordinance... Excuse me, Section 15, any part of provision of this ordinance is declared to be unconstitutional and invalid by court of competence jurisdiction law. Sections not declared invalid shall remain in full portion of effect.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kendrick. All right. Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
Same move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Andrus. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. So that is 10 to 0. And I would now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Same move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Andrus. And another roll call vote, please. Mr. Burgett.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Andrus?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes.
All right. So that is also 10 to 0 and will be ordinance 2809. All right. Which brings us to the end of the old business agenda and to the committee referral agenda. I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Gier, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0. All right. Which brings us to other new business. 110621, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 112 Hollywood Boulevard. Brought to us by Christopher Allison, the homeowner, and Wyatt Pugh of our BEZ department. This item is also on the committee referral agenda to go to special issues. This is just to set the public hearing. We will set that public hearing for July 12, 2021 at 6:00 p.m. All right. Next item, 120621, request for consideration of an ABC O40 retail beer on or off premises and a 060 retail table wine on or off premises license for Sinesta International Hotels Corporation DBA Sinesta Suites Birmingham Homewood located at 50 State Farm Parkway. Brought to us by Melody Salter. It's my understanding that letters of no objection have been received from both fire and police, so everything is ready to go on this and I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Same move.
By Ms. Nelms?
Second.
Second for Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0. All right. The last item, 130621, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of June 15, 2021 through June 28, 2021. Brought to us by Robert Burgett and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mr. Harden called me today very upset that this was his last time he was going to be doing the vouchers. He's done an admirable job for the second quarter of the year, turning it over to Mr. Gualtney, starting at our next phase. So I'll yield the floor to Mr. Harden for the vouchers.
Mr. Jones, I really appreciate that and it is going to be a sad day for me. I do want to make a motion to consider the approval of the vouchers for the period of June 15, 2021 through June 28, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. Do we have a second? So Mr. Gualtney? Second for Mr. Gualtney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0 and if I can find the last resolution, 2190 will be the resolution number for that. ninety will be the resolution number for that. All right. And that is the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor, you've already given us comments, so I didn't know, make sure you don't have any others. All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Waltney?
I don't have a lot to add. I was just going to say I hope everybody has a good Fourth of July, whether they're traveling or staying in town. Whatever you do, be safe. And, Mr. Harden, if you, if you would like to train me, I'm happy to be trained on the vouchers. This will also be my first time, but if you would like to continue, I'm happy to yield the third quarter.
I'm the best trainer in America.
Excellent. Looking forward to it. That's it.
All right. Ms. Gier?
Yes, hi. I don't have any particular announcements, but I do have a question. I didn't really know where it fit. Is there any type of discussion that needs to be had at this point related to Pink House in executive session or anywhere else? Do we have any information to, anything to discuss?
Not that I'm aware of at this point.
Okay.
We may, we may well at some point, but at this point, I'm not aware of anything that needs to be discussed.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Alamon?
Yes, I just want to say that we had a lot of really exceptional people apply for the park board position in Ward Two. I think that we have that across the board, and so it's difficult to put all these talented people on the board. But just want to encourage folks to keep on applying because we are appreciative of their service and their willingness to serve. I also just want to say that I'm really appreciative of the fact that we're moving forward on two sixty Ochs Moore. It's a long time coming, and that it continues to stimulate the growth of West Homewood as, as a desired destination, which is fantastic. And finally, if you haven't been there, please go to Littleland. It is fantastic. It's a great, great spot to enjoy a meal and a drink with your friends and/or family.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wilberton?
I just want a second. I guess there's a general sense of relief with having some positive direction, I think, for the Ochs Moore Road property, and hopefully look forward to seeing some substantial changes in the next six to nine months. So I'm excited about that. Also want a second, what Counselor Alamon had to say about people putting themselves out there and applying for, for boards. I think through those discussions, even though sometimes the questions are somewhat directed at the specific opportunity that's in front of us, that we're interviewing them for, it leads to seeing passions for other things, and we're able to identify people that, that would make a good fit if, in, in other capacities within the city and, and boards, and board vacancies, even if they're not selected for that one. So again, I appreciate people's willingness to serve, the seven applicants that we had, and, and their desire to serve the city. Also, do, do want to thank Christopher Bailey for his service over the last five years in that park board position, and hopefully he enjoys living on Salter now. And I guess lastly, Brian, if you, I sent you a picture. I wasn't sure, but yeah. So I just want to say happy birthday to my wife and my son, Clark. They both had birthdays a day apart since our last meeting, so they had a good little dinner at Maya, and it's a great place to get them with the sombreros and get a little mariachi band going on. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Thanks so much. Thanks, Mayor McCluskey, for the appointment to the beautification board this evening. The beautification board, just so everyone knows, will not be meeting in July, so the next meeting will be in August, just as a heads up. And also have a couple birthdays recently on council. I believe Counselor Smith had a birthday last week, so happy birthday to her, and also to Counselor Nelms has one coming up, so happy early birthday to, and I hope everybody has a great Fourth of July. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Finance, it looks like we don't have that much, but...
Oh, and, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt you, but remember that these committee meetings will be occurring before council meeting on the twelfth.
Right. So that would be...
July fifth.
July twelfth. Well, July twelfth.
We're taking the fifth off.
Yeah, okay.
Where the, see, county, city hall is closed on the fifth.
Well, that'd be a combined hall.
So I'll be, I'll be at five o'clock, and we probably, Mr. Burgett, we're, we're going to be able to have the audit report by then, or?
Yes.
Okay. Then we'll need thirty minutes on the...
If we do that at five, Mr. Jones, and we got other committees, that doesn't give them a lot of time.
Well, someone can still go before Finance.
Well, yeah, we might have to go a little bit early on the other committees. At five o'clock, remember?
We're always first. I don't know whether you're five o'clock.
Just remember, it's five o'clock somewhere, and it's usually finance.
Not first. Five o'clock.
Okay. And then, and then I want to make a, I want to make a quick comment. And I don't, I don't mean to be negative about, about the development. I mean, I, I am excited. I really wish there was something else that was going there, but, but I'm, I'm excited. And as I went to the farmer's market the other night, I, I couldn't even find a parking spot, so I had to park almost, you know, way down there by the pool. But it, it was, it was really exciting to kind of li, just listen to the sounds of the park and of the pool, and just, you know, I, I'm, I'm just really proud of that development, as to what it was before, and, and what we've developed it into that people love, and they're using, and restaurants there. It's just, I don't know, sometimes it's nice to pause and reflect on something that you did that, that was correct, you know, and, and I just feel like that whole area is just looking great, and I'm really happy about that. So just wanted to share that.
Absolutely.
Stunning, stunning what, how it's changed since we moved in the neighborhood, for sure.
It is.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Let me jump back.
Yeah. I was actually going to say, I, I don't, I don't have any new business, so...
Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did.
Do I?
Yep. You got, you got something coming on committee referral.
Sorry. Hold on.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
Oh, nine oh-sixty-one.
Uh, yes.
That's what we added.
Although I thought there was an email that indicated that...
It's going to both, the, the work in the right-of-way comes to Public Works, the sign variance goes to special issues, so it will be in both committees. It's two, it's two different requests, so it's got to go to, so it's in both committees. So it, it will definitely be in yours as well.
Walter, you said five-thirty?
Five to five-thirty. That's right.
Okay. Is your understanding we'll have somebody there to speak to it that night?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
How long do you, would you guess that they actually need?
It's a lot of...
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Fifteen?
Yeah, I'd say at least fifteen minutes. Yeah.
We'll set it for fifteen minutes at five-thirty.
Okay. And, Mr. Waltney, you don't need to set the public sector, right? Okay. Thank you. All right. Where are we? Ms. Nelms?
Yes, I don't have anything tonight. I just wanted to say happy birthday to Barry last week.
Indeed.
And, and happy birthday to you.
Yes, almost birthday. So, yes. And that's all.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
Yes, so our current Counselor Smith is in Omaha right now cheering on her Mississippi State Bulldogs. They're, I'm sorry.
They're the...
They beat the Longhorns, so. Anyway, so I will be setting special issues for her. And I do need to set P and D as well, so how are we looking for time?
So we've got fifteen minutes left before, so one of you will go, I don't, I don't know how much time either of you need, but...
I don't need more than fifteen minutes. Should we set her for...
Probably five forty-five.
Yeah. And then should we set her for four-thirty?
Four-thirty.
Okay. I don't really have a whole lot to say. Counselor Waltney and I attended our Jefferson County Council Roundtable on Friday, and we've gotten some representation from Trussville, Gardendale, and, gosh, Andy, there's another, there's a third up north. I can't remember. But we have been lacking in northern representation, so we, we now have that. It's exciting. And we heard a great presentation from Mr. Martin from BJCTA to talk about, you know, of course, he's, he's headed out the door September thirtieth, but to talk about, you know, what his vision for moving forward in the county would be with transportation. And I spoke with Commissioner Steve Ammons today about that, and I do think that's something that we may be picking this up and kind of trying to work with our Jefferson County delegation. I had all of a sudden got big, you know, vision of fixing Alabama, because we are one of four states in the country that do not take, do not have state funding at all for transportation. So I don't know if I'm biting off more than I could chew, but I did talk to Commissioner Ammons about that today, and he's also interested in looking at that in the Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham is as well, so that may be something we kind of take a look at. Hoover is getting ready to sign with the, I'm getting ready to go, they're going out to bid this Waste Management Authority. So October one is when they will be on that. So Casey Middlebrooks from Hoover gave us the update on that. And what else, Andy? What else did we talk about?
Besides the BJCT update, that was just of it.
That was about it.
Just some stormwater talk, other ancillary items.
So, but it was great. We're, we're moving.
It's all the Waste Authority.
Yeah. Yeah. And that was, that's about it. So anyway, the project is, is going well, and excited about our new membership, and anyway, that's all I've got. Hope everyone has a good fourth of July.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
I'm very excited to let Counselor Waltney take over my duties on the, on the finance. I want to, we, we, in our ward, we're really anxious to get the waterworks done and through, and hopefully weather will cooperate, and at some point we'll have new paved streets there, because it is quite a mess, and has been for some people for a long time. But I also just want to always thank all the employees here in the city and all they do for our city, because without them, we would be in trouble.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harden. I don't really have anything tonight. Like, yes, sir, Mr. Kendrick.
Having spoken about the Waste Authority, at the last meeting, it was expressed that the council desired to appoint Mr. Bischoff at the proper time, and I think based on Berkeley's report, the...
We're now at the proper time?
It, it, it's up to you. I have a resolution appointing him for a three-year term, if and when you want to consider that.
But we, we're now to the point where they're keeping odd numbers with us in.
Yes.
Correct.
They admitted to at the last meeting, so that...
Fantastic. So I would...
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Mr. Jones, and a second from Ms. Andrus to approve Mr. Bischoff as the representative to the new Waste Authority. Any questions or comments?
I just, I have a question about this.
Sure.
So, so is this, Mr. Kendrick, are you saying this is a resolution you sent?
No, I haven't sent it.
Okay.
I just have it prepared whenever you queue to...
I mean, is it, and...
Sure.
Is there any reason we need to vote on it tonight? I mean, I just, I have no problem with Mr. Bischoff going. I just don't know what it says.
Sure. Right. I'm, I don't, if we, if, if you want to put it off for a week, or till the twelfth, let me just ask, Berkeley's not here.
We'll have to read it.
Yeah. Let's just do that.
Yeah.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Be it therefore resolved that on the twentieth day of June, two thousand twenty-one, by the city council of Seaview, on a regularly scheduled meeting with a Quan being present as follows, that the city council has approved the application of the SCAB Solid Waste Authority by Resolution twenty-one dash eighty, which authorizes the formation of the authority in accordance with Chapter eighty-nine A of Title eleven of the Code of Alabama, the Enabling Act, to alleviate the burden and increase cost of solid waste removal and treatment in accordance with the Enabling Act, as amended in conjunction with the City of Hoover, the City of Trussville, the City of Festive Hills, City of Mountain Brook, City of Pelham, and other jurisdictions whose neighboring borders and/or needs for innovative solutions to address residential, commercial garbage and recycling, to create an opportunity to streamline and otherwise provide for a greater physical responsibility in this issue of solid waste removals. Each city appoints a qualified elector for their jurisdiction, and the city council of Seaview, on one, does appoint J.J. Bischoff to serve as a member of the authority board of directors for a term of three years. Section two, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its publication as provided by law.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Yeah. Mr. Sims?
Thank you for that. I just, that's great. And, and as before, just so it's understood, J.J. is our representative, but then if there's anything that comes back that's an opportunity from the menu of services from the Waste Authority that we may want to consider, that obviously comes back to council before anything moves forward. J.J. doesn't have that authorization.
Correct.
The council will have to prove any contracts.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. Any other questions or comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That's ten to zero. Congratulations again, Mr. Bischoff.
Yeah.
All right. So with that, again, just a reminder that there will not be committee meetings next week on the fifth. City Hall will be closed that day, celebrating July fourth, which is on a Sunday. We will be back on the twelfth for both committees and council. And with that, we are adjourned until that time.